Good evening. We're gonna get started here in about a minute or two, because we would like to, we have a very, very ambitious evening. So, we're multitasking today. We're doing a lot of stuff. Waiting on a couple more board members, but we do have quorum, so probably we'll start in one more minute. All right. Good evening, everyone. We are in the beautiful Millennium Park, Kent County's crown jewel of parks. And I would like to welcome everyone today to the Kent County Board of Commissioners for Thursday, July 22nd. We are calling the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Commissioners Skaggs.
Here.
Wooden.
Here.
Womack.
Here.
Bulkowski.
President.
Legrand.
Here.
Hennessy. Commissioner Hennessy. Commissioner McLeod. Commissioner McLeod. Commissioner Sparks. Commissioner Sparks. Commissioners Teal.
Here.
Breevy.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Burl.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Vice Chair Steck.
Here.
Commissioners Jones.
Here.
Morgan. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Antor.
Here.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Chair Bolter.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have fifteen members present, four absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're on to item three, invocation. I'll call Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For invocation this evening, I have the pleasure of bringing to the podium Reverend Jerry Bishop of LifeQuest Ministries, a dear friend of our departing county administrator, Mr. Britt, and a spiritual leader in our community.
Thank you for an opportunity to come to our world-class facility, our world-class county, and the exodus event of our county administrator. Let's take thirty seconds for a moment of silence for those that may not be of the Christian faith. Father, we stretch our hands to thee on tonight. And Father, in an act of gratitude, we want to say thank you, God, for the hands of favor on our world-class county, God. And Father, I thank you, God, for the accumulation of world-class talent that administers the business, Father, of our county. But, God, as we gather, Lord God, not just to settle county business, God, but to give a world-class send-off to our administrator, Wayman Britt. We thank you, Father, for the tenure. We thank you, Father, for the service, Lord God, that he's rendered during his time serving us in various capacities. Now, God, we ask and pray that you guide our event on tonight from every aspect of this celebration. Father, we ask and pray for continued harmony, continued favor on Kent County and all the municipalities that make up Kent County. We thank you in advance, God, for what you're doing, God, in the various wards, the various areas, Lord. We thank you. We praise you. And it's in Jesus' name and all of God's people said, amen. Thank you for the opportunity to come and serve on tonight.
Item five of our agenda, special order of business. I will call on Matthew Van Zetten to meet me at the podium. This is so comfy, because the cameras are gonna get the back of our heads.
That's all right.
(laughing) How are you?
I'm good.
We miss you.
Miss you too.
All right. So, many of you know that Matthew left us in the middle of the pandemic, and we weren't able to be together in person. And I didn't feel like that was a proper goodbye to someone so important to the county. And I'm gonna try and not give a clump like I always do, so... I know. Breathe. So, it's very appropriate that we are in Millennium Park today to honor you. We thought that would be probably the best place to do it. And I'm not gonna read this proclamation, because it doesn't begin to fully cover your vast amount of work, no question. But I am gonna just hit a few highlights. Matthew Van Zetten began working for Kent County in 2005 and worked until February 12 of 2018. Some of the highlights of his illustrious career included improving the life, of course, of our residents, but the Sports Commission, Kent School Service Network, West Michigan Partnership for Children. Additionally, he worked very hard to move the first steps, the early by five childhood millage through in our county. He worked to combine the two Departments of Asset and Community Development Department together under the Community Action. I just can't even get through it. He's just done a ton. I don't think that there's ever anyone in this community who could say that Matthew didn't take a super-complex issue, pull it together, get everybody in a room, and come up with probably the best policy solution we could come up with. He's the reason why Kent County is a leader in the state in public policy, and we dearly miss you. So, thank you.
Can I say something? Can I say something, please? I can't say thank you enough for doing this for me tonight. Had a lot of grief over, like, emotional grief over how everything ended. And because I didn't really want it to end, it just happened. And ultimately, it's better. It's good for me and my family. But I want to just say a couple of remarks. I wouldn't have been very good at this job, except for probably three or four reasons. One, my parents are here tonight, Jim and Diane, in the back. If you haven't guessed, I grew up in a really WASP-y house. My dad's a pastor in the Reformed Church. That's a good Dutch thing. My mom was a teacher, nonprofit administrator in house, you know, she stayed at home with us when we were really little. And they created an environment where every night we talked about current events, because they had a newspaper in our house and The Time or Newsweek Magazine. And they let us argue and discuss faith and politics. And the first time my wife came to our house for lunch, she was blown away and shocked at, like, the two hours that we spent doing that. So, but it allowed me to have a lot of really important conversations and become really grounded in who I was as somebody of faith. The second part of that is that I went to public schools. And I'm not talking about suburban public schools. I'm talking about urban public schools. Holland Public Schools, back in the eighties, when one school was majority-minority, and today, it's all majority-minority. Kalamazoo Public Schools, where I was bussed into downtown, the north side, sixty percent white, forty percent African-American. And then I finished at Grand Rapids Union, believe it or not, with John Hemphill. He was a year behind me. And this guy, Alan Bolter, who sits over here tonight, too. And they can talk about the diversity at Grand Rapids Union. It was more than just racial diversity. It was economic diversity, because there was about, maybe, what, fifteen percent of us that were middle-class? And that taught me a lot that I didn't learn at my house. I learned how to work with all kinds of different people who are different than me. And I learned that their lives were just as valuable as mine, even though they looked a lot different and came from a lot of different places than I did. So, the third one I would like to say is my wife. This is all in kind of a chronological order. Amy. She's like three A, and the two children that I have there, Ezra and Greta, are three B. Amy's put up with a lot of stuff. Neither of us had any idea when we got married twenty-five years ago, related to my health. And she's loved and supported me through all of that. Surgery upon surgery, hospitalizations, all that kind of stuff. And then my children. I remember the first day Ezra was in utero with Amy when I started this job. And Greta was almost two, and I came home, and Greta says, "Dad, fancy, fancy." Because I was wearing a suit. And she was, I was two, and we had just learned about Fancy Nancy, and we were reading all that. And they've seen me in this job, and they probably had to sacrifice a lot of emotional bandwidth, because I was exhausted and tied up with what we were doing here. And they gave me grace for that. So... And then the last one is the fourth, is that Wayman Britt protected me a lot, because I'd get a little bit fiery sometimes. And he'd tell me to calm down. And then the incredible staff you have at Kent County and the departments and whatnot, because they are really smart people. And they gave me a lot of information that I could synthesize, put together, and get us in a room to solve a problem. So, I just want to encourage you, as the new Kent County Board, I look around, there's new faces here. It's kind of cool and exciting. Miss my old man, Morgan, but I'll get him later tonight, I'm sure. You all know who you are and where you came from. I think that's pretty clear, because you got here. But remember where other people come from, too, and that their belief system or their families might be different, but they might be okay, just different. And how do we create public policy that serves everybody? Because we're all here in this country, and we all want to make a contribution, I think. So, I have a lot of confidence in West Michigan. I just pray that we don't act and become like other places in our state and nation, and that we can hammer out those differences locally in small meetings and large meetings and hear from people. Because that's what's gonna keep the quality of life high for everyone. Not speeches, not, you know, rhetoric. It's gonna be working hard behind the scenes to get stuff done. I always wanted to be a show, a workhorse and not the show horse, so... Anyway, thank you very much for this honor and getting a time to say a few things, because you're actually, like, hearing the real me tonight. And not always, you know, what I had to be when I was at a podium, smiling in front of cameras. Stay out of trouble. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right. Phew. All right. We are on to item six, public comment related to agenda items. Do we have anyone here for public comment related to our agenda? All right, seeing none, we are on to item seven, consent agenda, and I'll call on Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move adoption of the consent agenda of today's date.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Wooden, support by Commissioner Jones. Questions or comments on the consent agenda? Commissioner Ponstein. Yeah, so Commissioner Ponstein's question was, can we get minutes and summaries of the work sessions, correct, Commissioner Ponstein?
Correct.
I think we can, for sure. And I would refer to Jenny, if you had any other additional comment.
We'd be happy to make sure any board work sessions have thorough minutes for your review afterward.
Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Clerk Lyons.
Thank you for calling on me. When it comes to the minutes, we typically just do the, what is required of us for Open Meetings Act, which is not a summary of what was said, but what was acted upon. I think, I think where we left discussion off, it wasn't that there would be the comments in the minutes. However, there would be some type of debriefing.
Or maybe we just record them. I mean, that might be easier for everyone, so I think we should probably look into that.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that we weren't changing the practice of the actual official minutes versus being able to have a recording or debriefing.
Good point.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on consent agenda? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Skaggs.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Hennessy. Commissioner Hennessy. Commissioner McLeod. Commissioner McLeod. Commissioner Sparks. Teal.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have sixteen yays, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're on to item eight of our agenda, resolutions. And we have quite a few here. I'll call Commissioner Green for a motion on eight A.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move resolution number sixty-eight of today's date.
Moved by Commissioner Green, support by Commissioner Wooden. Questions or comments on resolution sixty-eight today? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution sixty-eight, Commissioner Skaggs.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Hennessy. Commissioner Hennessy. Commissioner McLeod. Commissioner McLeod. Commissioner Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have sixteen yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution sixty-eight is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're on to eight B of our agenda, and I'll call Commissioner Breevy.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move resolution sixty-nine of today's date, capital improvement projects for correctional facility and information technology from the Sheriff Department and information technology.
Moved by Commissioner Breevy, support by Commissioner Sparks. Questions or comments on resolution sixty-nine? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution sixty-nine, Commissioner Skaggs.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Hennessy. Commissioner Hennessy. Commissioner McLeod. Commissioner McLeod. Commissioner Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Morgan. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have sixteen yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution sixty-nine is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're on to eight C, and I will call on Commissioner Wooden for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure to move adoption of resolution seventy of today's date to extend family shelter support. It comes to us from the Administrator's office.
Support by Womack.
Moved by Commissioner Wooden, support by Commissioner Womack. Questions or comments on resolution seventy? Commissioner Antor.
Chair, I was just hoping that we continue to pursue FEMA. Sorry. I'm just hoping that we can pursue FEMA and their responsibilities on this, and we'll stay on that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution seventy, Commissioners Skaggs.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Hennessy. Commissioner Hennessy. Commissioner McLeod. Commissioner McLeod. Commissioner Sparks. Teal.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have sixteen yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution seventy is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to eight D of our agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Steck for a motion.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move approval of resolution seventy-one of today's date, which authorizes you, as the board chair, to execute the employment agreement with Mr. Al Vanderburgh.
Second, Skaggs.
Moved by Commissioner Steck, support by Commissioner Skaggs. Questions or comments on resolution seventy-one today? Commissioner Ponstein.
So, when the word's used to execute it, so the agreement hasn't been done yet, or is it done?
The agreement's done when you vote to have it done. I have executed an agree, or I have negotiated an agreement along with Commissioner Steck with Mr. Vanderburgh. And today, we are asking for board approval. I have a copy of those, of that contract, if you'd like to see it. And Commissioner Steck can also address it as well.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Well, let me do the follow-up, because it really wasn't my question. So, with the answer to that, then, is reading this resolution, if I wanted to read that agreement, I needed to go to the clerk's office, because there's a copy on file there. I would think, and maybe I'm the oddball commissioner on this, if I'm gonna vote on a contract for the new county administrator, and I really have not a single idea of what's in that contract, wouldn't it have been a courtesy to at least make sure that every commissioner got a copy of that contract that they could look over, you know, prior to this vote? Because, you know, right now, I have no idea what I'm voting on. I'm just voting on a contract, and I don't know what's in it. And for, you know, you folks to say, "Well, there's a copy here. If I want to look at it," well, that's kind of unfair to me.
Commissioner Steck.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Bolter. In response to Commissioner Ponstein's observations, first of all, note that this agreement was the product of extensive negotiations back and forth between Chair Bolter, myself, and Mr. Vanderburgh. And it has been distilled after those negotiations to an agreement form, which we did have available. And I think that we reached out to all of our commissioners to discuss those terms with folks beforehand. And certainly, if you had reached out, it would have been made available to you, and it still is available to you now, if you want to look at it. It's easy for people with jobs with regular hours to say, "We've tried to reach out and try to get you the information." Some people here work second shift. I can't have a phone on me. So, I mean, I get numerous messages. I mean, I've always told the staff, "If you want me to read something, or you have to have something to read, you know, email it to me." So, it's in my box, where I can see it, where I can read it when I get home at ten o'clock at night, or when I get up in the morning.
Any other questions or comments on the contract? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution seventy-one, Commissioners Skaggs.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Hennessy. Commissioner Hennessy. Commissioner McLeod. Commissioner McLeod. Commissioner Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
No.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have fifteen yays, one nay. The motion passes. Resolution seventy-one is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to our last resolution of the day, eight E, and I'll call on Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. I would move approval of resolution seventy-two of today's date, which calls for the authorization of Jennifer James and Jeff Dode to sign appropriate contracts in the wake of Administrator Britt's retirement.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Steck, support by Commissioner Coleman. Questions or comments on seventy-two? Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. So, just kind of reading the end of it, can they sign on their own, or do they have to do it together?
Linda, do you want to answer that?
It's either one.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution seventy-two, Commissioners Skaggs.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Hennessy. Commissioner Hennessy. Commissioner McLeod. Commissioner McLeod. Commissioner Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have sixteen yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution seventy-two is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're on to item nine, public comment related to general county matters. Do we have any public comment related to general county matters today? Seeing none, we are on to Commissioner Reports. Any official reports today? Are we holding them back for a later date? All right. We're on to item eleven, Commissioner miscellaneous. Do we have miscellaneous today? Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Matthew, I love you. You're a great man. And Mr. and Mrs. Van Zetten, you raised a great man, and I just wanted to thank you from the bottom of my heart for helping save my life, and I mean that. People don't know, they have no clue, a lot of people, what you've been through. And you inspire me. You continue to inspire me. You have since I've known you, so thank you so much. Godspeed.
Any other Commissioner miscellaneous today? Commissioner Bulkowski.
Yeah, since the Chair won't give you the microphone any time later tonight, I do... Yeah, maybe. Anyways, I do want to take an opportunity to also thank Matthew for his service. Had opportunity to work alongside him, both with his hat on and my other hats. And Matthew has always been a man of integrity, working for good in a good manner, because too many people like to justify the means by the end. And that is, many of us find that, I'd just call that evil. So, you are a good man doing good things in good ways. So, I thank you, and I look forward to your encore.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I will join my colleagues in again acknowledging you, Matthew, for your incredible years of service. I would like to say it's because you come from Pella that accounts for that, but I'm sure that that's not all. And it comes from the commitment of your parents, your family, and your hard work, and the grace of God. So, we thank you for that. And then, secondly, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge and thank you all for joining us here in this world-class park in a world-class district, sixth district, by the way, in a world-class county. Thank you.
Any other miscellaneous today? Commissioner Womack.
Just want to say goodbye to you, Matt, even though it's not goodbye, because I still sneak and call you here and there since you've been retired and check on you. And I just want to say that when he talked about going to school in such a diverse environment and how it played out in his life, he really is speaking from the bottom of his heart. I remember coming to Mackinac Island for an event with the commissioners. My first time, I got stopped by the police, held up. It wasn't a good experience. And Matt was able to read me and kept asking me, "What's wrong? What's wrong?" I'm like, "Nothing's wrong." Finally, I told him, and I'm telling you, he just rebuilt my spirits that day. He hung out with me the whole day. He fought me and wouldn't let me spend a dime while I was in Mackinac Island, and we rode back on the boat together. And it is just a beautiful lesson I was able to tell my community, too, you know. And even me and that officer later, as I had to go back to that little township, we had a chance to talk and made up. And it was a happy ending, but... to talk and made up, and it was a happy ending, but I think my attitude would've been totally very harsh if I hadn't have left knowing one thing, don't judge a race of people or a country by the actions of some, and don't even judge one person by a bad day in their life, because me and that officer are still friends to this day, but Matt, you really dug in deep, because I didn't know you, so I was like, "Who would this guy keep asking me this question following me around?" I'm glad I opened up, and I wanna thank your parents again for raising you, and your wife and children for sharing you with us. You are truly a Godsend, and you will be missed.
Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. Not to continue our shorter meeting, but to join the chorus, I certainly wanna thank Mr. Van Zetten as well. You know, you mentioned how Wayman Britt sometimes would talk you off the ledge, because you get a little fiery, and, well frankly, in my first term, you talked me off the ledge a few times too, and counseled me and very much kind of had a, you know, I hope you don't mind, I almost felt kind of a big brotherly mentorship in my first term as I learned this role and grew into it, and I couldn't thank you enough for that. And certainly appreciate all that you've done for this county and the people here, and fulfilling that lifelong mission of being a workhorse and not a showhorse. Thank you.
Any other miscellaneous today? All right, seeing none, I wanna just round it out by echoing all of that, and to your children, I want you guys to know that your dad is awesome, and he really, truly did make an impact in this community, and I hope that you will carry on his tradition of public service in some way, because we need you into the future. And to your wife, thank you for sharing him, and to your parents, thank you. With that, I also want to thank the staff. Putting this together today was not easy. I think they probably were cursing my name several times, I'm certain of it, over the course of the last couple of months, and I don't know if this is the first time we've ever held a board meeting in a park, Dan might know, but it might be the last, but we'll see. But yeah, it's just an amazing venue, and I wanted us to be here and to highlight it, and I'm really appreciative that everyone cooperated, and the weather cooperated, and the staff was awesome, so I really wanna, really wanna highlight our awesome county staff. And with that, I will call on Commissioner Wooden for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to adjourn, subject to the call of the Chair, to Thursday, August 26th of 2021